Can everyone hear me now? Okay. We're gonna call a meeting to order. Thank you all. I'd like to start off by saying welcome. It's Thursday night, October 21st, 6:30 PM. Welcome to the council meeting, regular council meeting for the village of Royal Palm Beach. At this time, I'll ask you to stand and join us in a pledge of allegiance. Okay. Diane, please let the record show that all members of council are present.
Yes, Mayor, I will.
And we'll start out with our reports. Today is the third Thursday of the month, and that's usually when we have the Transportation Planning Agency meeting, board meeting. We had that this morning. We had many administrative approvals to make regarding our tip and planning requirements, and we've got a lot of really good updates. But the one point I wanted to share with everyone is, we got a presentation from Brightline, where they scheduled us, they're gonna be starting their service, I think it's November 5th, early November. The 5th? Yeah. But there was a part of the presentation that touched my heart. And that was, they announced that they're providing a service where they will pick you up at your door and bring you to their station. And when you get back, there'll be some transportation waiting for you to take you back to your door. And they said there'll be various modes of how to do this, you know, RVs, Uber, Lyft. But the point is, this is a core component of the strategy that we at the TPA are looking at, in terms of, one, helping to create a new transportation fee so that we can really build a robust public transportation capability in our county. But a key component to that public transportation network will be, we need to get people... Is that? That signal? Was that you, Ray? No, that's one of his secret calls. That's the signal that comes in, anyway. The key component will be to have the capability, and hopefully the cities will adopt this, and the funding will be there for them to do that if we get this transportation fee passed, to get people from their front door to wherever the capabilities and public transportation options are, and they know that when they get back, they get taken back to their front door. It's a true implementation of the concept that we've been talking about for many years, it's called holding that first and last mile. And I was just very happy to hear that, I wanted to share that, because this is something that'll affect everyone. Anyone in our village who wants to take advantage of Brightline, knowing that this is gonna be available through the same app that they use to schedule their Brightline ticket service. So I just wanted to share that, I think that's something that's important for our citizens to know about, that what's coming and what's in store there. So with that, I guess, Jan, we'll open with you tonight?
Sure.
How you doing?
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you. Bittersweet news with Dr. Armus leaving and going to John I. Leonard High School.
What?
Yes.
When did that happen?
They announced it yesterday.
Jeff, how'd you let that happen?
He's done such good work, they need him at another school. But there will be a community focus group meeting to put input to the new high school principal. They're going to hold this on Monday, the 25th, so next Monday, from 5:30 to 6:30 in their media center. And you can either go in person, or there's a, you can join virtually.
Via Zoom?
Yep.
Okay.
The number's 240-560-2935, and the PIN is 151179294.
Make sure we get that, Diane, we'll get that information in our publications.
What time did that start, Jan? Did you say 5:30?
5:30 to 6:30.
Okay, that's enough.
Yeah, that's enough.
Okay. Jeff?
Thank you.
So just to follow up on that, obviously trying to get a replacement for Dr. Armus as quickly as possible is a priority for the district staff. And following on that meeting you were talking about for the focus groups, try to get some input from folks who are gonna be most affected by that choice, will be an interview that will take place by the school district selection panel on November the 4th. So we're trying to move as quickly as they possibly can to make that happen. Lots of stuff going on in the school district, I mean, that's the one that has the greatest impact on us. I mean, we're gonna miss Dr. Armus.
Wish him well.
You know, he's made almost every single education advisory board meeting in the eight years that I've been on it. And it's mainly because he believes that it's important to have a relationship with the municipality in which he's located.
Absolutely.
And of course, we all know how important schools are, and when it goes the other way, it's a pretty good, powerful combination. So we're gonna miss him, I mean, he brought the IB program here, it's the only one in the county.
He, that was a major accomplishment.
It is, and it was not an easy thing to do.
No, it wasn't.
We know anything about those programs. They're hard to get.
And once he got it, making it, getting it up and running and being effective, that took some work.
Yep. And he also brought the junior ROTC program there and a whole bunch of other things.
Yeah, that's another, that's another nice big accomplishment.
We get to see the color guard on Memorial Day and Veterans Day, and of course, it's great for the school. I mean, it's just a lot of things that he's done. Now, of course, find someone who can maybe take it to the next level, pick up on what he's done so far. But the key to what he's done is he has brought some amazing talent to that school. I mean, I was checking the numbers of doctorates that his staff actually has, and they have seven doctorates and 63 master's degrees among their faculty. And one of the great testimonies is the fact that so many of their staff actually have either kids in the school themselves, or I think there are like 25 of them that are actually alumni at the school.
Wow.
So people tend not to go back to an organization or a school that they don't think highly of, and so this is a testimony to what he's really brought, and we're gonna miss him, no doubt about it. But there's a lot of good talent out there, hopefully we'll find a good combination. Speaking of school and leadership, at the very top, we have a new superintendent of schools.
Permanent, a permanent one.
Permanent, Michael J. Burke. He was sworn in yesterday, as a matter of fact. So yesterday was a big day for the school board. And they not only approved Dr. Armus as a principal for John I. Leonard, but they also approved, or swore in, Michael Burke. Interesting, because he doesn't have an educational background, but he's been with the school district since 98, and during that period of time, he's been the budget director, chief operating officer, chief financial officer. I don't know if you all know him or not, or you had a chance to listen to him speak. Very matter of fact, very straightforward and very authentic. And interestingly, some of the comments that have been made about him by the board members is that he has a very calm demeanor. And so he's coming from a different background, different perspective, and it'll be interesting to see how he does and how the school district responds. So when you got support from, or the lack of opposition from the teachers' union, probably a pretty strong statement, support from the teachers, support from the principals, he's also a good start, so I think that'll go well. And then October, education advisory board meeting, we had on the 4th of October, and we got a chance to hear about Cypress Trail Elementary School and what they're doing. One of our homegrown principals, Bruce Salter, who used to be, I think, the assistant principal over at Royal Palm Beach Elementary, now the principal at Cypress Trails, and this is her fourth year as an A-rated school, so they've done really well. But one of the other things that I think is impressive is, they actually increased their student enrollment this year by about 10%. So schools headed in the right direction, they have this great relationship with Lion Country Safari.
Is that, is that more than prior COVID or after COVID?
Well, no, it overlapped here, so it's an increase during the COVID period. But again, it's a good school, you're doing a great job over there, and I'm sure we'll continue to do that. I did want, speaking of educational, just don't forget, Free For The Records coming up 28, okay? And it's a great book. I've read it several times, but I will before we get to read it. And last thing is ethics training, hosted by Palm Beach County League of Cities, will be held at Village of Palm Springs, the Village Hall, on November the 9th, from 8 to 12. If I still could just under after asking you to speak, I'm sorry.
Took that from the right way. Took it away. Sun is out.
You can give us a little preview. Never mind.
Give us a tease, right?
Right, absolutely.
Okay.
I don't have any reports, but I just wanted to see if Jeff knows, the meeting you mentioned on the 4th, is number one, that open to the public?
No.
Okay, so it's just, that's when they're doing it?
Close actual interview process.
Okay.
The public input comes on the 25th that Jan was talking about.
All right, thanks so much.
After the meeting, you can tell me the shortlist.
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. Actually, with Brightline, did they say when they're gonna start doing the stop in Boca, when they anticipate that one opening?
They're still working on that.
They're, they don't have a, okay, an estimated date?
It's moving along well, though.
Okay.
Yes.
Because then Orlando's next, right?
Orlando? They're gonna add another, another what? How many, 53 miles, they said? They're gonna wind up eventually going all the way over, past Orlando, just I-75, yeah, the Tampa area.
Right, they want to do that one, okay.
They could just get to Tallahassee.
It's faster than some of the airlines we've had to take.
We can finally find a way to get there fast.
Well, who knows? That may be the next major initiative after they get these done. I'll tell you what, they're spending a lot of money to do this.
Oh, absolutely. It might be faster to stop in Orlando and hitchhike the rest of the way to Tallahassee than the way we have to go. So we had a recreation advisory board meeting, we had a presentation on remodeling and renovation of the rec center, so it's really nice to see all the changes that are gonna come after that, plus the bathrooms that are gonna get renovated, so I'm super excited about that.
Really?
Yes, yeah. They're doing a lot of new things.
It must be a nice bathroom, would be exciting.
I'm really excited. Have you seen the bathrooms in there? Young at Heart has maxed out at 140 members, so they do have a waitlist, so just keep in mind if you're trying to get in there on the first Friday of the month. The community band is gonna start performing every other Monday at the cultural center, so they're gonna start doing their evening concerts again. Veterans Day breakfast and ceremony is on November 11th, and that is presented by the American Legion.
It's not final yet, so hold off on talking about that.
All right.
There will be an event on Veterans Day, but how it's structured and etc., we haven't finalized that.
So is American Legion supposed to?
We haven't finalized it yet.
Okay. Oh, you wanna take that, all right.
I didn't say that, I just said, we're still talking, we're still meeting and talking about it.
The green market continues on Saturdays out here at Village Hall from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Concerts, they're not gonna start alternating between concerts and movie nights at Commons Park on Friday nights, so tomorrow night is a Huey Lewis and the News tribute band, and next Friday is the movie Coco. And they're actually getting between 400 and 500 people there at night for the concerts, yep. So it's really nice to see everybody back out again. Haunted House is continuing out at Commons Park again for the next two weekends. And programs that are either continuing or opening up at the cultural center, yoga, chair yoga, oil and acrylic painting, knitting, dance, baseball, and pickleball. Commons Park is, you'll be excited about this, because we're getting ready for, at Commons Park, they're doing the kayak rentals, so they're gonna start doing that, it's all animated, oh, no, no.
Automated. You said animated.
Animated, automated, that too. Because Coco's animated, so therefore... That one, and then they're gonna start doing the bike rentals as well, so they'll have two locations there.
But how's this different from what they used to do before? This is the same offering or something different?
No, something different, it's all through a phone, through an app on your phone? No.
The phone?
Yep.
Wow, so the people without the phone are in trouble, huh?
Yeah, well, we'll get the jitterbug for you.
Okay.
Yeah, you can get that. So that'll go out there, and they're also in the process of adding a second disc golf course out there, so it's really nice to see how they've expanded that space. We have two new staff members in the park and recreation department, so Shakira Thomas is our program coordinator for the recreation center, and Kelby Rothenberg is the program coordinator for the cultural center. So the two young ladies came to the rec meeting, very nice, really enthusiastic, and they were out at Fall Festival, helping out there too. So thanks again to staff for Fall Festival, all the events that we've been doing, it's really neat, a lot of positive feedback, so we, this year, everything was free at Fall Festival, so all the rides, everything that we had out there, we did the train ride, there were all the bounce houses and everything, the inflatables, so everybody was really excited about that. Tonight, the supervisory elections is holding a virtual event for the new voting rules that are out there, so you can go to pbcelections.org and find out all the information that's coming up there, so all the new requirements that are going through. And then the school district is going to do food distribution during the week of Thanksgiving, so for students, and they were providing meals through that entire break for them, so if you go to palmbeachschools.org, you can find out which schools in your area are doing the food distribution and timing and everything. And that concludes my question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. In our audience tonight, we have our new district chief. If you could come up and let me introduce you to the council. Philip Olavieri?
Oliveri.
Oliveri. Oliveri. So he's our new district chief, right here at Station 28, that we have a headquarters there, and he's in charge of the Western Communities Emergency Management, or Emergency Services, so...
Yes, sir. Thank you for allowing me to come up tonight, it's a pleasure to meet you all. You guys should have my business cards, if not, let me know, I'll get more business cards for you guys. This is kind of a homecoming for me, I worked out here at Royal Palm for seven years as a lieutenant, two years as a captain, and then I went elsewhere for a while, and now I'm back as a district chief, so it's a really great thing to kind of be back out here, kind of like coming home again. So, but if you guys ever need anything, please reach out, I'm here for you guys. We wanna make sure we have a good relationship that continues, and please let me know if you need anything.
Chief, yeah, welcome back, chief, so glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, and you're welcome to attend all about meetings, obviously.
Thank you.
No, but welcome back, seriously, thank you, okay.
I don't have anything else, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. To follow up on Councilman Hamara's comments about ethics training, whether this is a draw or a deterrent, I will be one of the presenters.
I think it's a draw, I'm looking on the positive side.
Thank you. So yes, I will be speaking on the topic of public records, which I spoke on the last time we did this, which was two years ago, we skipped last year for obvious reasons, but I know the last time we did this, when it was in Lantana, generally, my understanding is there were pretty high marks, given that everyone thought that was a good program, so if you need those four hours, it's a good opportunity for you. Also with the league, December 3rd, the league is resurrecting the Tri-City Barbecue.
I heard that, I heard something about that.
Yeah, it's gonna be December 3rd at the Bell Blade Marina.
We're really all trying to get back to the way it used to be.
So those are sort of the good news side. On the bad news side, I'm gonna, I don't remember if I mentioned this or not, you know, the assault on home rule is already started in full force, there's a thing out there called Senate Bill 280. And it would amend the legal standard and the process used by the courts to assess the validity of municipal ordinances.
What?
As written, it would require a municipality to prepare what's called a business impact statement before adopting an ordinance. It specifies the content of what this business impact statement is supposed to contain, which includes things like estimates of the number of businesses likely to be affected, any scientific basis for the ordinance.
Scientific, huh?
Yeah, I'm not making this up, this is unreal. Alternatives that were considered by the municipality that would reduce the impact of the ordinance on business, this ordinance, or this statute would, this bill, would provide for challenges to ordinances, it would provide for attorney's fees and costs to the prevailing party, provides for the suspension of any ordinance that is challenged in the court system. There are some exceptions, but this is, this is real, this is out there, it's already been introduced into a couple of committees, this is one the Florida League's been watching, and we're... You know, the information I've gotten from the Florida Municipal Attorneys Association seems to be that they feel like the legislature already has enough votes to probably get this through, so it's really kind of becoming a topic of, how do we try to soften this at least, or mitigate some of the really bad parts of it? This is one that's already got the league's attention and is being worked on from the municipal side, because obviously, if this goes on the books, it's...
You're saying the, you're talking about the Palm Beach County League?
And the Florida, well, Florida.
I was gonna say Florida, okay, all right. So this is something that if it were to pass, would impact future, creating future ordinances? Or would it impact anything on the books or?
No, it would only apply proactively, so anything on the books.
So we need to hurry up and get all our ordinances done.
Get all your ordinances done. Before adopting another order.
So, you guys can step up the ordinance, ready?
Is this all ordinances, Keith, or are there certain specific ones?
There are certain exceptions, I don't have the, I just have some little notes here, so I think like emergency ordinances maybe, and there may be certain land use type ordinances that would be exempt, but...
If we wanted to ban skateboards, we'd have to do a business assessment of...
The way this bill is drafted at the moment, that that's exactly the kind of thing that's...
Well, this is a continuation of what has been going on for several years now.
Yeah, I wanted to at least put that one on your radar, because it's a good one. And that is my report for tonight.
Keep us closely updated on this.
Will do.
Thank you. All right, so that concludes our reports for this evening. At this time, is anyone here who has a petition they'd like to present to the council? Now would be the time to do that. Seeing none, I'm closing the floor to petitions. All right, do we have any advance statements from the public?
No, ma'am.
On items on the non-agenda or items on the consent agenda?
No statements, ma'am.
Ray, do you have anyone out there with their hand raised who wants to comment on non-agenda items or the consent agenda?
No, I do not.
Therefore, I will close the floor to public statements on non-agenda items or items on the consent agenda. And with that, Diane, please give us the consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor, I will, thank you. Number one, approval of the minutes of the council regular meeting of August 19th, 2021, council regular meeting of September 2nd, 2021, first public budget hearing of September 8th, 2021, and final public budget hearing of September 23rd, 2021. Two, approval and authorization to renew annual software licensing and software maintenance support with Superior Public Sector Incorporated in the amount of $66,500. Three, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the first addendum to agreement for general planning and development review services to extend a professional services agreement with Urbana LLC for an additional one-year term beginning November 22nd, 2021, and ending November 21st, 2022. Four, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund 001 in the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. Set amendment to transfer a total of $99,000 from undesignated fund balance 3990100 to Planning and Zoning Other Services Professional 5153190. Five, approval of a special event permit for the village of Royal Palm Beach to hold a green market and bazaar at Village Hall every Saturday, beginning October 9th, 2021 through April 30th, 2022, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. No event on November 27th, 2021, December 25th, 2021, or January 1st, 2022. Six, approval of a special event permit for Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office to hold a PBSO Family First Kickball fundraiser located at Bob Marcello Park on Saturday, January 29th, 2022, from 7:00 AM until 6:00 PM. Seven, approval of a special event permit for Barky Pines Animal Rescue and Sanctuary Incorporated to hold a 5K run and walk with dogs located at Commons Park on Saturday, February 12th, 2022, from 7:00 AM until 11:00 AM. Eight, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute consultant services authorization number eight with REG Architects Incorporated to provide construction administration for the Village Hall construction. The cost for said services shall not exceed $93,800. Nine, approval and authorization in accordance with established policy to make a budget amendment for Fund 301 in the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget. Set amendment to transfer a total of $180,000 from undesignated fund balance 3990100 to Commons Park Pathway Lighting, PR 1903. Ten, approval of a bid award in the amount of $757,764, and authorization for the village manager to execute a contract with the lowest responsive bidder for the Commons Park Pathway Lighting, PR 1903, Project to National Traffic Control Systems Incorporated. Eleven, approval and authorization for the village manager to execute the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Agreement, in order to implement the disbursement of funds to the village as allocated under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 to facilitate the ongoing recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. Twelve, approval to allocate American Rescue Plan Act funds to provide, one, a one-time vaccination incentive in the amount of $500 net per eligible village employee, and two, a one-time lump sum premium payment in the amount of $1,000. per eligible village employee, and two, a one-time lump sum premium payment in the amount of one thousand dollars net to eligible village employees who work through the COVID nineteen pandemic. Thirteen, approval and authorization for the mayor to execute the twenty twenty-two municipal election vote processing equipment use and election services agreement signed between Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections and the Village of Royal Palm Beach. Fourteen, approval and authorization for the village manager to enter into an agreement with Haverland AG Innovations Incorporated, formerly known as SDO Landscape Services Incorporated, for annual turf maintenance services at four multipurpose athletic fields located in Seminole Palms Park at a cost not to exceed seventy thousand dollars, and by piggybacking the Village of North Palm Beach, term contract by resolution number twenty nineteen dash fifty-one, which is in effect through October first, twenty twenty-two. And fifteen, approval of bid award and authorization for the village manager to enter into an agreement with Eats and Teas Holding LLC, the sole responsive, responsible bidder for a monthly lease amount of five hundred dollars for food and beverage concession services in Commons Park Sporting Center located at one one six zero one, Quintiana Boulevard.
Okay, thank you. If there, if uh, anyone here has a question about a consent agenda item they'd like to pull, if not, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'd like to pull number twelve, please.
Okay, so I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda items one through eleven and thirteen through fifteen. Do you have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? We have no polls. Diane, please let the record show that all items for consent agenda were approved absent of item number twelve.
I don't know if the village manager wants to take this, um, but if he just wanna, um, going through it, I understand the um, one time, the vaccination incentive for the five hundred dollars, and then everybody who worked, so just for clarification, is it everybody who worked during the la- since March of twenty twenty would receive the thousand dollars? And then everybody who's vaccinated would receive the five hundred dollars?
We're going back to six months. Anybody who's been here more than six months.
Okay. So the last six months?
The last six months. Uh, if you're, if you're new employee within the last, the last six months, you're not eligible. If you're more than six months, you're eligible for the thousand dollars.
From now, from today?
Yes, from today.
So if I've, if I've been an employee for more than six months of today, I get the thousand dollars? Okay. It doesn't mean there's a certain period of time that I had to work because we had staff that went on furlough, we had.
Well, no, it doesn't because the ones that we sent home, we did, we only did that for less than a two-month period. And then the, the employees that we had uh, working remotely, we only had for that same two-month period. And then we brought everybody back after that, and everybody's been working the pandemic.
Okay, so then it would be everybody except who were hired in the last six months. Okay, and then what is our um, policy for staff regarding COVID? As it relates to vaccination? So what is the policy to come into the buildings or to come to work that you're either?
The policy that we have that if you're unvaccinated, we ask you to wear a mask, or require you to wear a mask in the public area.
And then if you're vaccinated, it's?
And if you're not vaccinated, you do not have to wear a mask.
Okay, so then why wouldn't all of staff that abide by our policy not receive the five hundred dollars?
Because we're given the incentive um, to be vaccinated because we, we do believe that once you're vaccinated, the severity of illness and the ability to spread is significantly reduced, and that's what the science tells us, and that's what we're wanting to encourage.
I, I understand we want to encourage it, but if, if as an employee has an issue with that, whether it's a health reason why they can, if it's a religious reason why they can, if it's a family member that received the vaccine and it didn't go well for them, reason? Okay, so I think anybody, any staff member that abides by our policy would be eligible for the five hundred.
That could be contrary to the incentive that we're trying to give.
But we have a policy, and that's where if any of our staff adhere to our policy, then they should be eligible for them. I mean, I understand.
This is a vaccination incentive, appropriate non-mask wearing incentive.
Well, but if the incentive is to keep yourself separate from everybody else, because if I've been vaccinated, that does not mean I can't contract it, that does not mean that I can't give it to others. That's just saying is, and that's what the science tells us, and that's what facts tells us, so.
That's true, but the science also tells me that the ability to spread is preserved with the vaccine, and the, and the severity of illness is, is reduced, and that's what we want, we want to encourage.
Except when you're first vaccinated and you start shedding, and then you make everybody sick around you. Yeah, that's, that's, so I mean, there, there are things that people who are getting vaccinated are getting blood clots. That's a fact. So, yeah. No, no, no.
You're delving into this way too deep.
Okay, my, so I am making a proposal that everybody who abides by our policy receive the five hundred dollars, and then everybody who's eligible, who has not started working the last six months is eligible for the thousand dollars.
No, that's not, we're not gonna do that. This is an incentive. This is something that many other companies are doing. We're not forcing anyone to do anything. We're not, you know, their jobs are not at jeopardy if they decide, they choose not to receive the vaccine. But we want to make a positive message that we are incentivizing, as other institutions have done, for those to encourage them. This is an encouragement to get the vaccine. That's it. End of story.
You're also penalizing those that have a reason.
We're not penalizing anyone. No one's being penalized.
You're financially, you're financially penalizing those.
It's not a penalty. If you, if you choose not to get the vaccine, that's your personal choice. Fine.
Then why am I being rewarded for doing something that I'm rewarded in?
We're encouraging you to do it. Look, we're not the first ones to do this. We're going, I.
That's fine. We don't, we don't have to follow everybody else.
Let's not continue with debating this, okay? We're not gonna change the way the, the, what's been stated here. All right? If you want to vote no, that's your decision.
We have a policy, and we have staff that adhere to our policy.
You can vote yes, but you can vote no. We're not changing it. So, let's not go on about it. Why, we're not, we're wasting time. Because we're not gonna change what we're proposing here. You want to speak, go ahead. Yeah.
I just, uh, I agree, you know, with what we're proposing. I agree with the mayor's, with what the mayor's saying, and I see the valid policy reasons behind it, and I am for them. However, I do appreciate that, you know what? Selena doesn't see it that way, and she wants a different policy, and that's what our job is up to here. Do we want the policy that we're putting forth here, which I do, or Selena's proposing a different policy? Now, if three people want to go with that policy, then that should be the policy. I don't agree with the policy. I'm going with what's here, but I don't think because her policy is different, that it's wrong, bad, or otherwise. I just think this is the better decision for us and what we want to get done. That's all I'm saying.
This is the policy that's being proposed, all right? Either you can vote yes, you support it, or vote no. All right? I am not asking for an amended policy here. End of story.
You're not asking for an amended policy?
No, I'm not. Unless this, unless this fails, then gotta be, open the door up, but we're gonna take a vote. Uh, I'm looking for a motion to approve this policy as stated. Very simple.
We have staff that adhere by our policy.
I'm sorry to hear you.
We have staff that adhere to the policy that we put forward.
Selena, that's not a true statement, what you're saying. The policy that we would like to see people follow is they voluntarily get vaccinated. We're not forcing anyone to do it, but if they choose not to, fine. But the people who have, and the people who will, this is an incentive to encourage them to do this. Very simple. No more, no less than that. Now, to paint this as a penalty is incorrect. All right, and I would, I would, I don't want to go on with this debate. I want to move forward with this. So, I don't know what else to say to you.
Well, this is, this is a policy that we have, and we have staff that adhere to it.
Any other members on council have a comment?
No, I was just going to suggest um, sort of evolve, dance around it, perhaps a motion of some sort is appropriate.
I'm asking for a motion. I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Motion approved. Um, consent agenda item number twelve?
Twelve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate your input, Selena. Um, Diane, let the record show that consent agenda item number twelve was approved for one. Okay. We're not doing anybody, anything in anybody's life. What are you talking, we're not forcing anyone to do anything. El contraria. Other places are, but we're not. Other places are trying. Okay, moving right along. The regular agenda item at this time, uh, agenda item R one is a public hearing to consider application twenty-one dash seven four, an application by Joni Brinkman for the consideration of landscape waiver for Village Code Section one five dash one three three sub D sub two to allow for four trees to satisfy the code requirement of nine trees within a certain perpendicular divided strip. Who wrote this? Or a one point, for a one-point-three acre parcel of land located on the northeast corner of Southern Boulevard in State Road seven. Bradford?
Mr. Mayor, if we could swear in the.
Hold on a second. I'm sorry. Go ahead. You guys, this is, I'm sorry, this is quasi judicial.
Can you all approach the podium and state your names for the record when you get there, and I'll swear you all in at once?
Joni Brinkman with Urban Design Studio.
Cee Jean Louis with Urban Design Studio.
Adam Karachi raising canes.
Stephanie Kinlan with Kimley Horn.
Christina Bout with Kimley Horn.
Thank you. If y'all could raise your right hands for me. This is a quasi judicial proceeding. Do y'all swear and affirm the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Turn it back to the council and ask if there are any ex parte disclosures with regard to application twenty-one dash seventy-four.
Yes, I met the applicant.
Applicants as well.
Thank you back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Just question, the, the other items related to this, they all have to be sworn in for that too. You want to do this?
No, sir. They've all been sworn in. I'll turn back to the council for ex parte individually, but they've all been sworn in.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Can everybody see, hear me?
I can hear you. I can't see you, but okay.
Very good. Uh, the applicant is requesting a landscape waiver from Village Code Section fifteen one thirty-three B two perpendicular divider strips. This code section requires a landscape divider strip to run perpendicular to the long dimension of the parking space, which shall be five feet in width and contain one tree for every fifteen linear feet. The applicant contends that, quote, "The landscape design goal is to utilize the existing trees, palms on the site as they provide greater maturity and ecological value than younger trees. Also, the effort to not promote bad arboricultural and horticultural practices. We do not want to overplant more trees in the existing tree palm beds. These beds have large mature root zones, which additional plantings will impact and constrict their continued growth and sustainability. The existing tree and palm spacing is roughly twenty feet on center, whereas the code states a maximum of fifteen feet on center spacing. The sufficient tree amount is five trees due to this spacing based on the village's calculation of three palm trees equalling one shade tree. The southern and western landscape buffer areas do contain a large amount of excess mature trees after already meeting site landscape requirements. This item was considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, and was recommended for approval by a vote of five to zero. Staff is recommending approval of this landscape waiver request and generally concurs with the applicant's assessment. Staff believes that this is the minimum waiver necessary to allow reasonable use of the property. And staff is recommending an approval of this application and landscape waiver number twenty-one oh one. With that being said, mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bradford. Um, Diane, do we have any previous public comments on this agenda, R one? Okay. Ray, everyone with their hand raised in the public?
No, mayor. Awesome.
Okay, I have no comment cards submitted on this agenda item. Does anyone here would like to comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm closing public comment on agenda item R one. Open up the comments for members on council. I'm sorry. I didn't give you a chance to speak. My apologies. Since I heard everybody said recommended approval, I figured, but go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. Um, good evening, mayor and council members. Uh, for the record, Joni Brinkman with Urban Design Studios. On behalf of the applicant, we're excited to introduce a new restaurant to the area. Royal Palm Beach will be the first one in the South Florida area in this vicinity to have it. I can believe there's one being considered in Boynton. Right now, there's one under construction in Miami. Um, I have my team here with me tonight, um, including Kimley Horn and representatives from the Raising Cane's franchise as well. What I would like to do tonight, though, is introduce Lindsay. He is a new associate at our, at our office, um, and he has been doing all the heavy lifting, and as we are training our young professionals to come up, we would like him to do the presentation tonight, and we'll all be available for questions as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Joni, and again, Lindsay Jean Lewis for the record with Urban Design Studio. Good evening, mayor and commissioners. We're gonna give you some more basic context on this, but today we're coming before you with a major site plan modification request, a special exception request for a drive-through restaurant, an architectural review, a parking variance for a request of a reduction of three spaces, a signage variance, which is uh, two components, asking for two menu boards, and a increase of a cabinet sign, which we'll get into later. And of course, while we're presenting at the moment, the landscape waiver, as Bradford just presented, of the reduction of five trees from the northern perpendicular divider strip.
Uh, he looks like he's looking up at something that I don't see.
Are we supposed, are we supposed to have a presentation?
Got accepted.
Something's up there, right, Ken? Okay, we're, we're, we're not getting it on our screen. There we go. Thank you.
I thought you had that memorized.
And as mentioned earlier, this is one.
Royal Palm Beach?
Yes, Royal Palm Beach, just one to be located at the existing Applebee's site at the northeast corner of four forty-one and State Road seven. And as you guys, uh, State Road seven and Southern Boulevard, and as you guys could see, this is also on the existing PCD with the Christ Fellowship Church. And the site is one-point-three acres, and the general zoning is commercial with uh, commercial land use, and we have some industrial um, zoning and land use properties to the east. In some general history, in nineteen ninety-one, this was originally approved as a Kenny Rogers Restaurant along with the Target PCD. Later in nineteen ninety-six, this was approved with the Applebee's, which is currently um, standing today, although they are in negotiations to start to end the lease, so that Applebee's will be um, heading out as that tenant pretty soon. And in two thousand and five, the Christ Fellowship Church was approved in that general PCD. And I'm gonna actually bring up and introduce Adam Karachi, representative of Raising Cane's, to give you guys some basic uh, information and background on that restaurant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh, my name is Adam Karachi. As Lindsay said, I'm with Raising Cane's out of our Dallas office. I wanted to be here with you this evening to explain the brand and who we are, because, as Joni said, we are new to South Florida. We are a chicken finger-only restaurant based out of Louisiana, so all we sell are chicken fingers. You get three, four, six, you can buy them in bulk, but they all come with french fries, coleslaw, and cane sauce, which is a proprietary sauce that's uh, unique.
That's a secret sauce?
Secret sauce, yes, and uh, and Texas toast. So, we, we only do that, and as a result, we do it with one of the fastest speeds in the industry. So you pull in, place your order, you're leaving with your food in two and a half minutes. Um, we are predominantly drive-through, as you'll see with the site plan. About seventy-five percent of our business is through the drive-through, um, and that even picked up during the, the COVID nineteen pandemic. So, we are, we're founded by Todd Graves in Baton Rouge in nineteen ninety-six, and the restaurant was originally unnamed. And as he was getting ready to open, he went to pull a business license, and he didn't have a name. So, he and his wife decided to name it after their dog at the time, Raising Cane, who was known as Cane by short. And so it became kind of a play on words, and so the.
I'm glad to explain that.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's kind of a little-known secret, but it's uh, it's plastered, you know, you see it in our presentation here. So, um, that's, that's where that comes from. But we're one of the fastest-growing companies in the QSR, the quick-serve restaurant industry at the moment, and um, we are very excited to be in your community. Screen. There we go. So you can see the lineage here. Um, just so you know, the Cane's dogs are actually all rescues, so they're not, it's not like a lineage or anything like that. They're, they're all um, dogs that needed a home, and currently, we're on Raising Cane's three, and she's four years old. We are actively involved in the community, so what that, a lot of people say that, but what that means for us is that this restaurant will have a community marketing manager that is somebody that will work specifically in your area of Palm Beach County, and they might handle this restaurant, maybe one other. But what they do is they go to your schools, they go to your pet shelters, they uh, help with entrepreneurship in the community, so that's other small businesses. We were once a small business, so we want to give back to that. But this person's job is solely to make sure that we are not just some chain that's come in and does the same thing and is run of the mill. Um, so annually, we give back several million dollars to grants and, and sponsoring Little League, you know, providing meals to whatever community event. providing meals to whatever community event you might have. If there's a request, we consider it, you know, but for the most part, we are, we're looking at those core areas of entrepreneurship, pet welfare, promoting, um, active lifestyles, so, uh, that would be like 5Ks or any other community event like that, et cetera. We do have over 500 restaurants at this point across, this is actually outdated, I think we're in 31 states now. Um, but this, the southeast was kind of the last frontier for us. We predominantly started in Louisiana, moved west, and we're mostly out west at this point. Other proposed locations, like Joni said, there's one under construction on South Beach, uh, and then there are several others in the, uh, South Florida area that you can see here. I'm not going to run through all those.
But we're, we're going to be the first?
You'll be the first, yep. Outside of my, of the South Beach project, you'll be the first.
Okay. Can I ask you a question? Did you do any specific, uh, market research that gave you a feel that this product would be successful in this region or?
Absolutely. I mean, this, this location is, um, at the juncture of two major highways, of course. Um, there's a lot of shopping in the area, and so those are the things that we're looking for. We're kind of looking at as a node. So, um, we don't go into residential areas. We try and look for like community centers that will, you know, have a draw to them naturally. We're not trying to pull people to somewhere else. We want to be where people come for another reason.
The confidence level is high. You're going to be very successful.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Good, that's good.
All right. Well, I'll turn it back over to Lindsay, and I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Adam. For the landscape waiver that we'll be presenting today, it's going to be a waiver request of a reduction of five trees. We are proposing, um, actually, there are seven trees currently there, but by code, it's considered four trees since four palm trees or three palm trees are considered one shade tree. And this is in the existing northern perpendicular divider strip. And as you can see here, we're utilizing the existing trees in that northern divider strip that were already installed on the Applebee's parcel. Our justification here is that the existing tree beds have mature root growth and any additional tree planting to match the current village code would actually impact sustained root growth and sustainability. So staff actually, um, implored us in discussion with staff, had us confirm that we're going to keep the existing trees there and formally request for the waiver. And here you can see the counting of the seven trees that currently exist on that. And again, this was, uh, supported by staff and then approved by the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission. And we'll get back up here for the sign variance.
Lindsay, wait, I just have a quick question before you go. If you go back to that last slide for me, please?
Yep.
And you had the seven, um, trees there. Are you proposing to remove any trees or you're just asking for the variance because normally would require the nine and you want?
Correct. No trees will be removed. It'll just be asking for the variance.
Thank you.
They got caught in the transition from the old goal to the new goal.
No, 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 that's fine. I'm glad that they're not removing any, but yes, there is that, yes, because there is that transition. I just wanted to, for the record, he's not tearing down any trees.
And no trees will be taken down.
We love our trees in Royal Palm.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions for members on council? No? Seeing none, I look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number one.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that, uh, agenda item R1 was approved by zero. Agenda item R2 is also a public comment to consider a variance application 21-31, an application by Joni Brinkman for the consideration of a variance from village code section 20-60 sub 4 sub E to allow for two menu pricing signs where village code only allows for one menu pricing sign. And a variance to section 20-95 sub E to allow for 30.7 square foot wall mounted cabinet signs where village code prohibits wall mounted cabinet signs in excess of 10 square feet for a 1.3 acre parcel of land located on the northeast corner of Southern Boulevard and State Road 7.
And if I could, before the applicant comes to present, ask if there are any ex parte communications on this item?
We met, I met with the applicant?
Applicants.
Okay. Bradford?
Yes, Ray, you're going to have to, um, add it to where he stops sharing his screen and so that you can then, let me share my screen.
I'm on Bradford.
Very good. I'm a pro at this now, by now. Okay, the site is located again on the northeast corner of Southern Boulevard and State Road 7. The applicant is requesting variance from two seconds of chapter 20 of the village code at article four, permitted signs. The applicant is requesting a variance section 2060 for E to allow for two total, two, total of two menu pricing signs where only one menu pricing sign is permitted by village code within the general commercial zoning district. The applicant contends that the proposed development includes two menu boards to accompany, uh, company two drive-through lanes. The dual menu boards are a necessary component of the development of this property as they increase the efficiency and functionality of the use of the site. While both menu boards will be utilized, cars with orders placed on the outside lane will merge into the lane adjacent to the principal building where they will be serviced at the payment window on the eastern portion of the building and the pickup window at the western portion of the building. During peak demand, customers will not use the merge point and will require both lanes. The outside lane will have attendance with iPads that will process payment and deliver orders to the vehicles in the dedicated strip path shown on the site plan. Twelve total queuing spaces are to be provided for both lanes with four queuing spaces located before the menu board in each lane. The estimated time to be spent in the drive-through for entry to exit should be no more than one minute and a half. Thus, the applicant is respectfully requesting sign variance to allow two menu boards at this site, end quote. Here's an illustration of those menu signs. For the second variance request, the applicant is requesting a variance from section 2095E to allow for a 30.7 square foot wall mounted cabinet sign where village code prohibits wall mounted cabinet signs in excess of 10 square feet. The applicant contends, quote, "The applicant is also requesting variance to allow a 30.7 square foot wall mounted cabinet sign which depicts trademark Raising Cane's logo, which is consistent with national branding. Discussions with village staff have confirmed that the red background area is considered a cabinet sign since the national branding incorporates the red area along with the channel letters as a single logo. The total area of the sign being considered under the cabinet sign definition will achieve proper legibility and visibility along the of consistency with national branding. The waiver for an increase to allow cabinet sign areas to be requested. It is important to note in regard to this request that if the sign proposed were, were considered a channel sign, the sign face area that would be allowed would be calculated on the linear facade length of the building and allow for a channel letter sign of up to 40.2 square feet. However, in this case, it requests to incorporate the standard branding for the user actually provides for a decrease of 9.5 square feet compared to the maximum allowed for channel letter sign. As such, the request to allow for a smaller cabinet sign as compared to a channel sign is warranted and will not have any negative impact on the surrounding area, end quote. The criteria for granting a variance is set forth in section 2632F6B specifically. Um, special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, do not result from the actions of the applicant. Will confer on the applicant special privileges. Literal interpretation of the provisions of the division will deprive the applicant of rights comfortably enjoyed by other properties. That the variance granted is a minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the land will be in accordance with the general intent purpose of the division, will not be injurious to the area involved, detrimental to the public welfare. Staff is generally in agreement with the justification of variance number one regarding the additional menu pricing sign for the split queue drive-through and that two pricing menu signs are important for the operation of two drive-through lanes and that special conditions and circumstances are peculiar to the site which are not applicable to other lands within the same zoning district. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of variance request number one to allow for the second menu pricing sign. Village staff is recommending denial of variance request number two regarding the wall mounted cabinet signs. Village staff feels as though the criteria for bearingless variance requests have not been met. Village staff is in not support of this variance because staff believes that no special conditions or circumstances exist which are not applicable to other lands. Granting the variance will confer on the applicant's special privileges that are denied to other lands. This item was considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on September 28, 2021, with the commission recommending, uh, approval of variance one and denial of variance two by a vote of three to two with Vice Chair Philip Marquis and Commissioner June Parent dissenting. Again, staff is recommending approval of variance request number one regarding the pricing signs and variance from section 2060 for E menu pricing signs and denial for variance request number two, a variance to section 2095, a cabinet sign. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
All right, that, you gave us a lot of information. Just want to clarify, make sure we're clear. Uh, staff is recommending approval on the, the dual menu signs. Is that correct? And, and the P and Z commission did approve it, but there was two dissents. Do you, was there a specific rationale for the two dissents on that?
Uh, no, there was no, uh, rationale given to us.
Okay.
Unless they picked up on it. But again, this is the menu pricing sign that, uh, staff and Planning and Zoning Commission were recommending approval for. This is the one that staff was recommending denial and also, um, is what was voted for a recommendation of denial by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'm sorry, recommendation, we're recommending denial for the
Cabinet sign.
The sign?
Yes, sir.
Not the menu?
Correct. Approval for the menu, denial for the cabinet sign.
It's interesting these, these were put together. They could be, could have been handled independently, but that's okay. Uh, that's why I wanted to be clear on that. We, we have approved, uh, this dual menu sign thing, right? It's something that's
Yes, sir.
It's a new invention of modern, uh, technology, I guess, for, for, uh, uh, fast food delivery. Okay, um, with that in mind, I'd like us as the council to address these two items independently. Uh, Keith, does that mean we can do two separate votes? I know, I'm not going to give them a chance. I just want to set the ground.
It, it's the same agenda item, but I, since there are two
There's two specific items here.
I don't have a problem if the council wants to take two separate votes on the items.
All right, that way we can address it that way, right? All right. Would you like to hear your comments?
And as Bradford mentioned, the first variance that we are requesting is going to be for the menu pricing boards. We're asking for an additional menu pricing sign. And here we see the McDonald's on Royal Palm Beach Boulevard and Okeechobee Road. That also has two menu boards, so this is an existing standard that we follow. This is more of an industry standard with these higher capacity drive-through functions. And as mentioned, staff was in support and the Planning and Zoning Commission also approved at least this part of the variance. Now, the second variance that we are requesting is for that increased cabinet sign. We're proposing a 30.7 square foot cabinet sign and the code minimum or code limit is 10 square feet. So the variance that we're requesting is an increase of 20.7 square feet of that cabinet sign area. And here's an example of an existing sign of a Raising Cane's development where you actually see more of a hybrid sign where this red background is more of the cabinet sign. And the cabinet sign by code is a sign face within a box frame or cabinet-like structure. And then you see these channel letters, which are separate individual letters, which are actually raised off of the sign. So these actually function as channel letters by code while the red area is more of a cabinet. But that's also in conjunction with the company and the restaurant's branding and the restaurant's trademark. And the channel letters, the individual letters, will actually be internally lit with LED lighting while the red background will not be lit, although that is used for the guts and the, um, wiring and the transformer for the channel letters.
What we're looking at here is, this is actually what you're looking to do or is this illustrative or?
This is what we're looking to do. Adam, you can come.
Yeah, so the spec sheet that's in the presentation that staff prepared doesn't do this very good justice because it's two-dimensional. So we wanted to show you an image of what this would look like in three dimension where jurisdictions have similar codes to you. So what we've done in the past is we've raised the Cane's and the raising part and the chicken's finger, chicken fingers part to meet the intent of the code, which is channel letters. And the red part is unilluminated. It just serves as a housing for the LED drivers, the junction boxes for the mains power, et cetera. So it's at night, if you were looking at it, you would just see Raising Cane's chicken fingers. You wouldn't see any red.
So is this the type of signage that you have on, you said you have 500 of these across the country?
No, this is, this is not prototypical. Prototypically, what we consider a cabinet sign would be a, I'm trying to explain this in a way that, so like a, an Aldi sign is a piece of Lexan with
Yeah.
plastic
Yeah, okay.
tape that is put on it. That's what we consider a cabinet sign. And that is what we historically have done at most of our locations. This is unique, and we only do this when required.
All right, so this is your attempt at trying to get closer to what our code is looking for?
This is, this is us trying to work with you, and I know it was very confusing leading up to this, but we felt this image would illustrate it in a way
Okay.
better than a cut sheet.
So if it looks exactly like this, I just want to be, what we're looking at is
The red would not be illuminated.
Was approved. This is what we're approving.
Yeah, we would, we would get better technical drawings that Bradford could review. This is what we're trying to do, and I, I think to date, it's not been very clear, but this is the intent that we have.
I have a quick question regarding, especially with this particular portion of the, uh, what's presented. You have, um, a face, you're going to be facing, because you're on a corner, so you're going to be facing south on southern. You're also going to be facing west on State Road 7. Are you proposing two signs because you're facing both at this size, or you just want one sign and which way would it face?
This is, we're proposing two signs. So there's one facing State Road 7 and one facing 441.
Okay, so you want it both up on the top in addition to the marquee signs that you're going to have outside as well, correct? That's coming down later down the road.
That's, that's correct.
Sure, okay.
Yep, and we've, just to point out, we've eliminated most of the prototypical signage on this building. So there's usually a mural, there's a banner with Raising Cane on it. Um, there are two other wall signs. Those have all been eliminated. There's a One Love letters on our patio, but your ordinance doesn't allow roof signs, so we eliminated that. So we, we really have tried to work.
Right. No, I appreciate that. I, I think it's just as, um, we did go through a very arduous, expensive process with our sign code quite recently. Um, and that's where I think is we've kind of encompassed it all, so I, I, I don't, I can't speak for everybody else, but I do appreciate the fact you did work on something that would appeal to our code with that. Is there any way that, and I understand the housing component of it for the junction box and everything, but is there a way to paint the red circle on the back and then just use the chain letters since it's not illuminated anyway?
Well, what that does is essentially we have to have the electrical inside the building somewhere. That, that tower parapet is not, it's not a box. It's literally just a framed wall. So on the backside of that is a PVC roof that can't be penetrated. So we would have to run 20 low voltage wires through the wall down into the dining room. And so it just becomes more complicated. So by having it in the pan behind the letters, it's a lot more simple and can be manufactured in a facility.
Right, and, and the benefit of always coming forward with this and, and asking for a variance sets off red flags so that others can come through and ask for variances, and the signs keep getting bigger and multiplying and things like that. So that's why I just, I, I think it's a beautiful sign from a marketing perspective. I completely understand where you're coming from as far as the uniformity of it. I'm just trying to see if there's other additions we can do to work with it so that you don't have to shrink the sign and go through. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question.
One other question, go ahead.
So, so if, if, if you were to just paint the oval on there, would, how would that affect, uh, compliance with the code as written right now?
With the sign code?
Yeah.
The variance, as I understand it, wouldn't be required.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I guess a question of mine is, um, and I don't know if we can, if you can pull up the site plan, but as Selena mentioned, and I guess I'm just concerned with the one that is south facing. There's trees out there. You're not getting rid of any of those trees or anything, are you? Or is there any, any plant?
The landscape buffers are very dense and we're adding to additional landscaping to it, so there's not going to be any glare or anything that people are going to see from elevated highways.
Right, well, no, and but, but what my point is, is from, from Southern Boulevard, I can tell you, because I drive that every day, whatever you put up there, you are not going to see from Southern Boulevard. You might be able to see something from that access road, but the, the, the trees are pretty built up, so a, at least just, these are just my subjective observations that at least just, these are just my subjective observations that whether it's this or whether it's, and my understanding is too, if you did comply with the code, you can actually have a bigger sign that, you know, isn't going to have the benefits that you want here, but it'll be bigger. But I'm not really thinking that if you did comply and made a bigger sign that it's going to be any better or alert people more towards that side. But I didn't think about what Selena said. Are you looking for an expansion of the sign on the one facing west on State Road Seven? Or no, is it going to be compliant with the code?
The variance request is for both signs.
Okay, and how big, or how much bigger? Because my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if this variance is granted, the sign itself is actually going to be smaller than what you could have done if you just painted it on, correct?
That's correct. That's a relatively late addition.
Okay.
Interpretation.
And how about the west-facing ones? Because that's the one I think people are going to see. I, I mean, if you're either coming north or south on State Road Seven, I think that'll probably be the sign that will drive people in there. Is that bigger or how much bigger would that sign be with the variance as opposed to if you don't get it and you just painted it on? Okay. See? Sorry.
Yes, so to speak to that, all great points, council members. The way the code describes lot frontage is it's whatever the shortage property line adjacent to the street is. So as you can see here, Southern Boulevard has a frontage of a hundred and eighty feet. And then four forty-one has a frontage of two hundred and sixty-three point five feet. So we're applying Southern Boulevard as the accessible and the proper frontage for this. So here we see the layout of the Raising Cane's building. The frontage on Southern Boulevard is ninety-four point five feet. If we were to just do channel letters, say we were to paint that red background and we just use those raised channel letters to be in compliance with the code, it would be permitted to have one linear foot per foot of frontage on the accessible frontage. So here we see Southern Boulevard's frontage is ninety-four point five feet. And we'd have the possibility to add an additional sign, which would be half of that size permitted on the building, building front wall.
Theoretically, then two signs on the Southern Boulevard portion.
One sign on the Southern Boulevard portion and then one signs on the four forty-one portion facing west.
It's two signs, you're right, it's two signs, but what you just said though is if you're doing it by linear foot based on the square, you're saying is that our code would allow you to have two signs on that facing that way?
Not on the same frontage.
Not on the same frontage, okay.
The second sign on the frontage that's not designated as, which exactly would be permitted to have. So as you can see here, here's what we're proposing, a thirty point seven square foot sign with the red background consistent with the branding and the trademark. If we were to just do channel letters, we would actually be permitted a significantly larger sign at ninety-four point five square feet, which would give you a roughly sixty-four square foot increase if we were to just do channel letters. And then the sign that would be facing four forty-one would actually be permitted at half of that size at forty-seven point two five, which would still have a sixteen square foot increase based on what we're actually permitting or proposing with the cabinet sign. So.
That's a good, I'm glad you put that up. That was, that made the point.
And here with, we have some architectural elevations which show that the sign that we are proposing is consistent with the scale of the building. Both are, again, the same size that we're proposing, thirty point seven feet. And if we were to follow the literal interpretation of the code and have ten square foot cabinet signs you see here, it wouldn't really match the scale and it'd be very difficult to see for those cars traversing on Southern and four forty-one.
If I could interject here to address the earlier question. The monument signs up that are on the street are to let people know that yes, there is a restaurant here behind this buffer. However, we have to remember that, like, some people are hard of sight and when they get in the site, they don't, they might not know specifically where they are or they might be turned around if they're not familiar with the location. So you can see here, ten square feet, it's very difficult to read. So that's why we're asking for the, the standard sign that is proportionally designed to fit into that space.
Any other questions?
Yep.
On the signs? At this time, I'd like to, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I was just gonna, so this is just a general picture of the landscape buffer when you are traveling west on Southern. And I also wanted to mention that these signs are also very far away from the right-of-way.
The site you were talking?
The sign facing Southern is actually eighty-four feet away from the right-of-way and the sign facing four forty-one is actually a hundred and ninety-seven feet from the right-of-way. So again, if you're traveling west on Southern, it's going to be difficult to see the sign. You won't be able to see it if you're traveling east on Southern because of that on overpassing the highway. And then if you're traveling south on four forty-one, you're going to have to take a U-turn and be able to see the sign on your right. And if you're traveling north, you're going again, going at that forty-five, fifty mile an hour speed, you're going to have to have a sign that's visible enough and prominent enough for you to know that the restaurant is there. You know you have some.
All right, once you have monument signs out there?
So we will have a monument sign. I'm not sure if you can see my cursor, but we'll have a monument sign located here, which will just again take place of that existing Applebee's sign there. And then we'll have a monument sign on the east side of that entry on Southern.
Do you anticipate requesting a variance for those sides, for the size of those two monument signs?
Those two monument signs are in compliance with Southern.
Thank you.
And here we just see the general trademark, which is very needed for the branding of the restaurant and the colors.
Okay. I'd like to find out, the public has any comments? Any advance comments on this agenda item? R two? Ray, anyone out there in the public wants to comment on agenda item R two?
No, Mayor.
Okay, then I'm going to close public comment on agenda item R two. And I'll ask for further comment and discussion from council on the first variance request here in, in R two.
Makes sense to, to, two lanes, to, to menus, otherwise you can't see what to, what to order. I mean, that just makes sense to me.
All right, but there are no further questions or comments, then I'd like to get a motion to approve that particular variance request.
Well, you have to be specific, just that one line.
Yeah, the, the request for the, the dual menus.
Variance request number one, right?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve agenda item R two, variance request number one.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed? Diane, let the, the record show that, I guess you would be specific. It's variance two one dash three one? That's how you would identify it?
And it's variance number one.
The application, variance number one?
It's variance number one of that.
So we're clear, I just wanted to be clear in the record with what's approved. Okay. Now, I will ask for any further comments and discussion on variance item number two here, which is the, the, the sign.
I'll start real quick and just tell you, I'm, honestly, I'm torn about it and it's back because we do have a code. We, we went through all of this. And I've learned over the years is that when you give one, somebody else comes up, well, you did it for them, now you have to do it for us. But we need a little bit bigger because now we're a little bit further away. We just went through this with a sign on State Road Seven. From a marketing perspective, I completely understand what you're saying, the difference in the signage, the size. And that because of the foliage, it is difficult to see that as well. It, it would look disproportionate with the different size, the chain letters without that. That honestly, I'm still kind of torn back and forth. You've given a lot of good information, but.
All right, just, just to clarify a point though for council. Various requests have to stand on their own individual merit. Because we've approved prior variances, has no bearing or impact at all on what we decide to do with the next variance that may be similar. It's, it has, it's, it's, it stands on its own merit. There's no precedent set. Of course, the, the applicants will always like to say, well, you did it for these guys, but that doesn't legally has no standing, okay? So I just want to be clear. Because we've All right, so whatever we approve tonight doesn't lock us into something else.
No, it doesn't, but it locks us into others coming up and saying
That's fine.
I want variances.
We'll just look at them and go, no.
Oh, okay, so we could do that tonight then?
No, but I just wanted, for the record, make sure we understand the legal reality.
There's no precedent setting.
Okay. That means, well, okay, now, I have some comments, but you wanted to comment back there.
I just want to reiterate one thing that they've said that I don't want to miss. They're not using these signs as signage of, of the site to the roadways. They said their monument signs are doing that. They're using these as, as basically onsite, an onsite locator. And they're putting it over their door and their architecture kind of emphasizes their door. And I think when you're looking at that, that it looks proportional as it relates to that portion of the architect of the building and then putting it over the door. The idea that they, they went through our code and saw our desire to have channeled letters and that they made the lettering that, I, I think between that and the proportional sizing correct over the door for being seen from the parking lot does make sense.
Good. You want to comment?
Yeah, and I just, I, I, I share Selena's concerns, especially after, you know, you went through and did all the, all the signage stuff. And I guess that was a good point the, the manager pointed out. It's not going to be something which is good because it's not going to be visible for Southern Boulevard. But I, I guess the thing that sways me towards it is the fact that you could have bigger signs that I don't think will look as good as what you're looking at now. So, I mean, I, I guess I'm falling on the side of allowing them because they're going to be smaller even though they're different and too big from what our code allows.
Real quick, can you put the, go back in the chair and just put the difference in the, that one slide that you have where you can see it? Thanks.
Yeah, so here you see the difference that the sign on Southern is able to use that square foot of frontage on Southern.
Any other further comments?
No, I agree. I think, I think that they could go to this nine point, ninety-four point five square foot and that sort of looks very out of place with their, with their door and how it would fit in. And can, can we call this new hybrid sign? I guess it's just a hybrid, right? Because it's not just a simple cabinet sign anymore.
Beyond, it's like beyond.
By definition, it's a cabinet though, isn't it, Ray?
By definition, but it's
By definition, it's a cabinet because of the way
I thought they had to be
What we call traditional
Flat.
But that's, like, generally, yes, you're right.
And so now you've got these raised letters and I, I appreciate the fact that they tried to do
Yeah, I was going to say, I think it makes a difference that they did try to come to a compliant model, all right? And yeah, it is kind of a hybrid, but, you know, concurrent with the points that the village manager raised. This passes the eye test for me, all right? When you look at what it could be, all right? I think the fact that this is, makes it proportional, it, it, it has a pleasant aesthetic, aesthetically pleasing look to it. And all things considered, I think that might be the best, best way to go in terms of what they're asking.
It's smaller than what's allowable otherwise.
So if there are no further comments or questions, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve regular agenda item number two, variance request number two.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that general item R two, variance number two was, was approved by zero. Okay, now that's, is it Lindsey? Did you say you grew up in Royal Palm? Oh, I missed her, yeah? Okay. Who said?
New fire chief.
No, I knew the, yeah, we're, we're waiting on the fire chief right now. Oh, you go up, I wish we had known that. Wait a minute. Wait a minute, we might have to do a new vote.
But I don't think it was Wellington back then, was it? It was unincorporated probably, so.
Was it the Acme Improvement District?
So they just called you old, remember that?
No, we're just kidding. We think Wellington is a wonderful, wonderful city. We're glad that they're our neighbors, okay? Okay, I think we're done with agenda item R two? Okay, moving right away, right along. Agenda item R three is also a public hearing to consider variance application twenty-one dash three two, application by Johnny Breckman, for the consideration of a variance from village code twenty-three dash five three sub two Q. To provide for a variance to allow fifty-six parking spaces inclusive of twenty-one spaces via cross-parking agreement where the village code requires fifty-nine parking spaces for a one point three acre parcel of land located in northeast corner of Southern Boulevard and State Road Seven. And Bradford?
I'm here. Thank you, sir.
Before you begin, I'll ask the council if there's any ex parte disclosure on this item?
Advocate.
Advocate the advocate.
Thank you. Go ahead, Bradford.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a parking variance from village code ordinance section twenty-three fifty-one, perance two Q in order to reduce the number of required parking spaces from fifty-nine parking spaces to fifty-six parking spaces for a proposed Raising Cane's restaurant. We request results at a variance of three parking spaces. The applicant has entered into a cross-parking agreement with the Christ Fellowship Church to allow cross-parking with the church for twenty-one of the required fifty-nine parking spaces. Again, here is the criteria for granting a variance. I've gone through these with the sign variance and I'll save you the time. And the applicant contends, quote, "The proposed Raising Cane's prototype is designed to place emphasis on the drive-through operation rather than typical dining end. As a result, the proposed prototype consists of a significantly more floor area dedicated to high-volume kitchen and dining area. There are fifty seats proposed for indoor dining area and twenty-two seats proposed for outdoor dining for a total of seventy-two seats. Parking rate, as required by the village code, would not equally count for the prototype proposed and seventy-five square feet of gross floor area would be required to be parked in addition to one space per employee on peak work shift. Parking the entirety of the gross floor area as well as the employee requirement would be double parking the space associated with a high-volume kitchen since employees are the only ones operating that floor area and already are required. A parking spot each at peak shift, the parking variance that is being proposed is supplemented by the fact that those parking on the site that are not using the drive-through or not employees will not be utilizing the dining area within the development. Parking requirements in other municipalities approach restaurants with drive-through parking in a similar way as the parking rate is based on either dining area, number of seats, whichever is more restrictive of the two," end quote. The item was considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one as been recommended approval by a vote of four to one with Commissioner Ray Nazareth dissenting. Village staff is not as supportive of this variance because staff believes that no special conditions, circumstances exist which are not applicable to other lands. The condition is a result from actions of the applicant. However, it is important to note that the applicant has, in staff's view, brought forth the minimum variance that makes possible the reasonable use of the land, building, or structure by reaching out to the church in order to reduce variance requests through a cross-parking agreement. Again, staff is recommending denial, a variance ordered B C twenty-one oh nine. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Bradford, just one question. Staff has verified the existence of the agreement with, with Christ Fellowship for the additional parking?
Um, Benny, help me out on this. We, we reviewed that.
Okay, so the net-net of what we're looking at is a variance for three parking spaces?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Does the applicant want to make a presentation?
And I won't And I won't deviate too much from what Bradford had already presented, but again, the variance that we're proposing is, we're proposing fifty-six space inclusive of twenty-one spaces via cross-parking and access agreement with the church. The code is requiring fifty-nine spaces, so that's a variance of three spaces. And here we see the general parking breakdown. We have thirty-five spaces provided onsite and then twenty-one of those spaces are provided off-site with the church parking agreement. And in April, we actually had a site plan concept where we had metal parking on-site and we were going to place the loading in the off-site spaces. But staff wanted us to have the loading space on-site, so of course in discussions with staff, we redesigned the site plan, which brought us to this variance today. And here we see a typical Raising Cane's high-volume kitchen. And here we see a typical Raising Cane's high-volume kitchen prototype. Again, Raising Cane's does roughly 70, 75% of its business through drive-through operations. And the gross square footage of the restaurant we're proposing is 3,200 square feet. But as you can see here, roughly 1,200 of the square feet is actually dedicated to dining area. So again, this restaurant isn't your traditional sit-in, dine-in restaurant. This does most of its business through drive-through, and most of the square footage is dedicated to kitchen area. So if we were to use the one per 75 rate that the village code has, that would require 16 spots dedicated to customers if we were just based on the dining area. And if we were to also incorporate the peak 10 employees on peak shift, that'd be 26 spots in total, which is a quite large difference between the 59 spaces which would be required by code. And here we see that site plan concept from April where we did decide to try to place the loading in the off-site church spaces. And we'll get back for the site plan modification.
Can you leave the other slide back up? Yeah, thanks. And then where is the current offloading location? So if it's not going to be those two spaces offsite...
Yeah, the current loading will be, I'm not sure if you see where my cursor is, right over here.
Okay. Yeah, once again, usually I don't with parking because I'm one of those frustrated people that when you go to park and there's nowhere to park. However, I completely understand considering that the majority of the business is drive-through. I do appreciate the fact you're working with the church, and they've done that. My only suggestion is, is that if it's possible for staff to park in the church parking portion, that way when customers do come in, they do have parking in that area. I do know Sunday's going to be an issue just because of services there. Might be the only one, but on a regular basis.
And on that note, there is actually an hours of operation where the restaurant will not be open prior to 11:00 a.m. on Sundays.
Correct, the only problem is that they don't start exiting that area until 12:30, and then they need police escorts out of there. So, yeah, when you go in, it's...
They could continue to do that with their escorts. But the real issue is, you've got to have that place open, so when the people come out of church, you've got a place to go eat.
Then they would need a bigger dining area then.
Take it and go home.
Okay, any other questions, members of council? If not, then I'd like to find out, do we have any comment cards from the public?
No comment cards.
No comments? It came in early.
Diane was ready to go.
Ray, we have any hands raised?
No hands raised.
Okay, so we have no hands raised. I have no comment cards submitted to me this evening, so I'm going to close public comment on agenda item R3. And unless council has other questions, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I approve regular agenda item number three. I make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? And Councilwoman Selena approved it twice.
I know, I can hide.
I know, that's fine. Let the record show that we still had a five approval for agenda item R3. Okay, very good. Moving right along, agenda item R4 is a public hearing to consider application 21-30, an application by Joni Breckman in adoption of resolution 21-19 confirming the council's action. The applicant is seeking site plan architectural approval and special exception use for approval of a restaurant with drive-through for a 1.3 acre parcel of land located on the northeast corner of Southern Boulevard and State Road 7. And you want to choose to make a presentation? I'm sorry, go ahead Bradford.
Thank you. I'll be brief. As you stated, the applicant is requesting a site plan modification, special exception use, and architectural approval in order to redevelop a 3,267 square foot restaurant with drive-through on a 1.3 acre parcel, out parcel, as in the formerly known as Target Center Plan Commercial Development. The applicant is seeking architectural approval for the building, architectural color, signs, and landscape plan. In reviewing the application, village staff considered conformity with chapter 26 of the village's code of ordinances specifically parcel size, parcel width, setbacks, pervous area, landscape plan with the exception of the waiver request to eliminate five of the nine required trees within the northern perpendicular driver strip, parking requirements, again with the reduction of three parking spaces to the village code required 59 parking spaces, maximum building height, queuing spaces. Here is an illustration of the site. Access to site will be from the existing right in, right out, from Southern Boulevard, and from the north, from an existing right in, right out, from State Road 7. And you can see these two drive-through lanes and the bypass lanes to the north of the building. Here is an illustration of the site's landscaping plan, which meets village code requirements. Here is an illustration of the proposed building architecture and materials that will be used. We've seen this facade before. Here is an illustration of the proposed signage out at the roadway. This here is the monument-style sign. This item was considered by the planning zoning commission at its regular meeting on September 28, 2021 and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero with the condition that if signed variance two regarding the cabinet sign is not granted by village council, that the applicant shall revise the AER application to reflect the reduced cabinet signs. If that is not the case, staff is recommending approval of this application and resolution 2119. With that being said, Mayor, I'll turn the floor back over to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Bradford.
Mr. Mayor, while they're approaching, if I could get our ex parte disclosures on this item?
Advocates again.
And Bradford pretty much covered everything. I don't know if you guys want me to give another presentation.
If you're satisfied with Bradford's presentation? Okay, fine. Go ahead. You need to... Oh, this is our ex parte?
Yes, you're good, thank you, sir.
Did I say staff? I meant with applicant? Okay. Do we have any comment cards? Prior comments? Anyone with their hand raised from the public?
No, Mayor.
Do we have any public out there?
We do, we have seven people attending. Well, Lou's in there twice.
I won't even ask about that. Okay, I get it, I guess. Okay, I have no public comment card submitted here, so therefore I'm going to close public comment on agenda item R4. Look for comments from members on council. If there are no comments, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve regular agenda item number four.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R4 was approved 5-0. And I think we're done. I just want to say to you, congratulations. And I have one question. What's your timeline to open your doors? This coming summer? Okay, you don't want to be more specific, but we'll go with that. What do you, are you going to have to tear down the structure there now and build from scratch? Okay.
Actually, real quick, I think that your square footage is actually smaller than the applicant's, correct?
Footprints are a little smaller, yeah, yeah. All right, well, we're looking forward to it, and we wish you the best of luck. Welcome to the Village of Royal Pond Beach. I think they feel like they've been here long enough. Take care, Joni. Okay, agenda item R5 is a public hearing for the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1014, amending chapter 20, signs. Wow, no figure. At section 20-1, definitions to amend and create definitions for select terms related to sign identification and regulations. And at section 20-2, 20-22, 20-25, 20-27, and 20-41, and 20-54, 20-57, 20-65, 20-71, and 20-73 to confirm village code to recent legal precedent regarding signs and to provide internal consistency. This is getting us in compliance with the way the law is written now.
Mr. Attorney? That's correct, and congratulations on doing a legally sufficient job of reading the title.
I'm glad I was legally sufficient, okay?
The council saw this on first reading a month ago, and we had a pretty good discussion. We made two changes to the document, since you saw it. The first is on page seven, and we corrected a codified typo that had existed already that was, we added the word "not" to that section, section 20-2B2, where it said, it used to say "signs should deny other persons the use of sight lines", and it should have said "should not deny". So we've added that correct word. More importantly, though, there was discussion on how to use village property for temporary non-commercial speech signs. We have taken, this is on page 20, and we have added some proposed language based on that discussion with the council, and we've inserted three blocks of time throughout the calendar year where village-owned property could be used for temporary non-commercial signs. These dates, there is nothing legally significant about them. If the council wanted to expand those or change those, that is absolutely within your purview. We tried to capture timeframes based on the discussion that the council had at its last meeting. Otherwise, this ordinance is as adopted on first reading with those changes.
Any questions from members of council?
I, well, I do have one question, and I guess a suggested change. We go to page six. Six? Yes. We have a definition of temporary sign. It says a sign designed, constructed, and intended to be used on a short-term basis, which makes sense, that's what temporary means. And then we go to page 21. Section 8B is listed temporary, non-commercial signs, not associated with a definite event. And then the listing there, there is no time duration.
Right.
So, to me, I think we should strike the word temporary from it because it's not temporary, there's no time duration.
In other words, you're saying unless you stipulate, how long is temporary? It doesn't make sense to use the term?
Well, if you can, if there's no time duration for it, then it's not temporary. It could be forever. Whereas our definition of temporary sign is it's intended to be used for a short-term basis. But what we're saying here for the temporary non-commercial is the opposite. We're saying that it isn't used for a short-term basis, it's no time duration.
In other words, it doesn't say for a short term.
It doesn't say for any term. You can have it for a short term or a long term.
Yeah, and it's a great point. The intent is to distinguish signs that you can just stick in the ground that don't require a building permit or any kind of construction.
Like the people who put the realty, realty guys who put in open house?
So...
I mean, I just think it adds confusion by having temporary there, but if there's a reason for it, you think, Keith, then I got no problem leaving it in, but it does seem like...
The intent is to make a distinction between the kinds of signs that are typically temporary, like a political sign or a for-sale sign versus a permanent sign that requires a permit like the sign you saw this evening, so...
But this, this temporary...
So maybe what we need to do is adjust the definition to be, deal with what it's made of and how it's installed versus...
Than the short-term basis type thing.
Right.
Yeah, and that, as long as we clear the ambiguity, because...
I would, I would prefer not to do that off the cuff.
Right.
Here, I would either suggest, I guess, maybe bringing this back.
We can bring it back. I mean, like you told, there's a time limit.
We announce a time certain to your next council meeting, and we don't have to advertise it again. We can just bring it back with some suggested edits to that definition that addresses that issue.
So would you be ready by the next council meeting?
Yes, I will. I just don't want to do it off the cuff.
No, no, I, no, we shouldn't do it off the cuff, I agree, no, no.
Yes, I have no problem having...
All right, so how do we handle that then?
I would ask for a motion to continue this second reading to... Time certain, is that November 18th?
Okay. Can we get that motion?
Make that motion to defer this, how do I say that?
Just say continue the item two.
Continue the item two, time certain, at our meeting on November 18th, 2021.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Diane, please let the record show that agenda item R5 was approved, not approved, was postponed. The motion was approved to a time certain of our next council meeting for final, for second reading. Okay? Any other questions, comments? Thank you all, appreciate it. Oh. Yeah, I'm trying to get out of here. Oh, sorry about that. Is this, if I had known that, we could have did this first. Next time, we'll make you first, I'm sorry. In acknowledgement that there is an agenda item R6, this is a public hearing for a reading and approval of ordinance number 1021, amending village code at chapter 11, fire prevention and protection, section 11-23. Propane storage, how could I forget the propane storage issue? In order to better conform village regulations with industry standards relative to tank sizes, and we're going to hear from Paul on this?
Well, I can handle this. This is, it really is just to meet industry standards. Tank sizes come in 56 gallons and 120 gallon, and when our 100 gallon underground was, you know, if people bought 256, they were over the 100. This just makes it more consistent and easier for people to have tanks that they don't have to bury.
People are buying, so we're making it easier for them?
We're making it, yes, because you need, you need about the 100 gallons if you're going to put it at your house, or you're going to be getting it filled too frequently. So the tank sizes come at the 56 gallons, so, which puts two of those above the, above our 100, and then puts it in a position where they have to be buried, and that becomes considerably more expensive and...
So we're saying it's okay then, to have 256 above ground?
That's what, if this gets approved, we'll be saying that, and then we went ahead and the industry standard size is 120 gallons, and we're saying that's okay to be above ground too. Anything bigger than that has to be underground.
So hopefully then they'll only get the one at 120.
Either way, it's fine with us. It's sufficient quantity to have at your house and have, and be filled on a basis, on a time schedule that makes sense.
Chief, you want to comment on this? You're okay with what we're doing? Okay, just want to make sure we're okay, you're okay with it. Okay. All right, do we have any comments from the public? Prior comments? Any hands raised on agenda item R6?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I'm closing public comment. I have no comment cards submitted, so I'll close public comment on agenda item R6. Are there comments from members on council? If not, look for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve regular agenda item number six.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no opposed. Agenda item R6 was approved, Diane, 5-0, and there are no more agenda items, right? We can adjourn? Okay, we are adjourned now. Thank you all again, appreciate it.